Appealing the prohibition of beekeeping or harboring of honeybees and the declaration that any beehive within the city of Norwood is a public nuisance and regulating the keeping and harboring of honeybees within the city of Norwood.
James, I guess since you brought this to our attention, I'll let you go ahead and explain what you would like for this ordinance.
Great, yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Tracy, and thank you for the committee for meeting. So, this ordinance is essentially, well, I guess just kind of backstop. The city for decades has had a prohibition on the keeping of bees in the city, and, you know, who knows why it started? I mean, there used to be a lot of density, we had a lot of people coming from out of town to live here, to work in the factories and stuff, and I'm sure that there was some issues back then, but I think now beekeeping is seen in a different light, and I think that there's a lot of urban beekeeping, and there's a lot more understanding probably now of the role that bees play in pollinating, you know, not just crops, but, you know, flowers and gardens and things like that, and, you know, essentially also recognizing that the bee, there are bees that are here anyways that are flying, you know, from the city of Cincinnati and other places, and, you know, in many places like the city of Cincinnati, New York City, there's many other much denser places than Norwood that have, are allowing beekeeping in the city. So, we kind of wanted, we had a committee meeting on this probably three years ago, but at that time, we didn't actually have a homeowner that was really wanting this to happen. We had somebody that was renting at the time, and it was a, the ordinances that were being put forward at the time were to restrict it only to homeowners, so, which I don't quite know if that was the correct way, but it never really went anywhere. And so, now we've got some very passionate people, homeowners and residents at the city that are wanting to push this and wanting to see beekeeping that allowed again, and I honestly think it's just probably a really good idea because there are in many, many other areas allow it, and I think that's something that we should discuss. The ordinance in front of you is an ordinance that's, many, much of it is essentially a copy of ordinances that are, that has been accepted and passed in other communities. There are, I'm sure, some specific, there are some specific parts that kind of relate to Norwood when it comes to the code. In this ordinance, you're gonna have, there's a specific place that, a few places where it mentions specific departments kind of managing the, essentially, kind of overseeing it when there's complaints. And in here, it doesn't actually mention in this specific draft which department, but I did talk to the law department, and the, we believe that the health department would be the most appropriate department to kind of, when there's complaints, to go talk about it, go figure it out, since they already manage similar things in the health code. In addition, beekeeping is regulated by the state of Ohio, so all hives have to be inspected once a year by a specific, a state agency, so they'll have, they'll send somebody out. And there's also Ohio Revised Code that's currently out there too, that has many of the, some of the things that are here, it's also mentioned there. So, the state really is watching over those two, and I think also making it so that cities don't have to employ professional beekeeping regulators, right? Because, you know, it's just more of a specialty, so. With us here today, if you don't mind me, Mr. Chair, so, we've got Emily Franzen and Justin Franzen, they're both Norwood residents and also maintainers, well, they've created or started a beehive at Xavier, so their bees are flying in Norwood now, but their beehive is not here, so they're not breaking the law. And then we have Mr. Brandon Reynolds, he is from, is it Bee the Keeper, is that how?
Yeah.
Bee the Keeper, so it's just, it's a great organization that's working with all kinds of different companies and organizations around the area to use beehives for educational and, of course, pollinating purposes, so. I guess would you like to maybe hear from them, or kind of what they have to say about that?
Yeah, I mean, if anybody wants to discuss regarding it, that's fine with me. Anybody else have any objections to it?
No.
Okay.
Just if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself, and kind of about what you would like to see happen, and, you know, I know that the proposed ordinance, the draft that we have, that we will probably, I'm sure we have on our agenda for Tuesday night, hopefully.
It is not, it is not, I didn't want to be presumptuous, so I did not, but I think the timeline, we're okay waiting till the 1st of February to have a first meeting.
So, we will have a draft coming, but if you could just tell us a little bit about yourselves, kind of what your history is with as far as bees go, and all three of you, and just, you know, just share with us a little bit about what you would like to see happen, and, you know, what you'd like to see happen as far as bees are in Norwood.
Brendan, do you want to go first?
Yeah, it's always funny, 'cause, you know, when you get beekeepers in a room, we're all so different. But, yeah, this was, this was really awesome, just getting all of us together, and we came together at, what, Sugar and Spice a couple of months ago to talk about this whole issue. I'm Brandon Reynolds, founder of Bee the Keeper, and I originally started off in 2017, I was in advertising, I just left school, UC, and so I was in advertising, and, you know, you learn about how to get people behind, you know, whether they're buying True Moon Milk, or, you know, buying new sneakers, and so when I left advertising, I kept thinking, you know, you're seeing all these tabloids and headlines, like, you know, the, you know, environmental crisis, you know, right now you've got Australia wildflowers, like, how do you get people behind sustainability? So, I had met a beekeeper at Carachows Farm, which is in North Bend, Ohio, back in 2014 when I was interning, and in 2017, I was looking for a job, and I said, "Hey, can you show me how to keep bees, 'cause I know it's a big issue now?" And he was like, "Yeah, for sure, dude, 'cause I've got 10,000 other things to do on the farm, and, you know, you're getting this off of my plate, I don't have to wear a big giant suit in, what, 110-degree weather in Cincinnati summer." So, I started beekeeping in 2017, and then for the past three years, I was just working on the farm and keeping them at homeowners' houses, and then eventually the idea came, if I keep it at bigger businesses and high schools, and that's, you know, more, you know, exponentially more people that are not only just thinking, "Okay," you know, the original regular people think, you know, bees, honey, that's the general understanding, but then when people start, you know, seeing a beehive and knowing that they collect pollen and go, what'd you say, three to five miles?
Ish, yeah.
Ish to get resources, then you start thinking, "Okay, what do they eat? Oh, they eat, you know, plants and different pollinating species." If you want to put a dent in the pollinator epidemic, it's planting for pollinators and supporting bees. So, it was great when the three of us, well, you were there in spirit, got together because, and it's honestly still magical, we talked about it last week, it's magical to me that like a bee colony, you know, the whole hive comes together to solve problems, to get resources, and, you know, survive whatever weather and predicaments are thrown at it. You know, we got together and we said, "We want to create a system for everybody in Norwood to be a part of pollinator conservation." And so, just like bees, we came together and put together this draft ordinance, and we're feeling pretty confident that you might enjoy it as well. So, and you've already had chickens the last time you were on council, so.
Yeah, last, I was sharing with them, the last time I was on council, we were adopting the whole allowing chickens, and I said, "Now I come back, and now we're adopting bees, and I'm not sure we'll go much further than that."
Yeah, adopted rabbits too.
Yeah, I was just about to say, we did rabbits two years ago, Jeannie Stanton and-
We're not posing like cows or anything.
Yeah, yeah.
So, with bees, I know it's not just the bees need the pollen, but they're also doing something, and I don't, I don't know, I'm ignorant to this, and that's why I'm really curious about learning more about it. The bees actually do something for the environment, they're not just out eating, coming back, making honey, they're actually doing something as well, am I correct in that?
Yeah, they're, they're known as, you know, pollinators, and that's one of their primary functions, they have a bunch of, you know, spiky hairs on their legs, and every time they visit a flower and collect nectar and collect pollen, some of that gets trapped on their legs, and the next time they visit a different related flower, that serves as fertilization, and, you know, because of that service, any, you know, flowers that are, you know, regularly, you know, serviced by bees tend to be a lot more productive, either in terms of creating flowers, or creating fruit, or anything else. There's entire businesses built around taking beehives and taking them to orchards and other farm venues to increase productivity.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, and the way that we look at it is, you know, you look at an orchard, and if you've got bees nearby, they're pollinating flowers, it equals more, you know, apples, but I think the way we look at it is bees are a window into increased biodiversity.
Yeah, so, it's good for the crops and such too, but having more pollinators around also helps non-crop plants in just the same way. Where having these flowers pollinated from different genetic lineages means that their offspring tend to be more successful, so it's not just, you know, it doesn't get as incestual, so to speak.
Yeah, if you just rely on, you know, wind or something to pollinate, it's only going to be within a very immediate area, but bees, like we mentioned earlier, will travel miles and miles, so you get a lot more genetic diversity because they're visiting all sorts of different plants, and bees are not particularly selective, you know, there are wild bees that are very, you know, particular, and, you know, some insects will only visit particular types of flowers, but bees will visit everything and pollinate everything.
The, sorry, the, so, we hear things like clover honey and stuff like that, and I'm guessing that's because the bees primarily are around clover fields.
Correct.
So, is Norwood in itself, is, do we have anything that's more predominant than, than something else as far as, as honey?
Well, in general, probably, it depends on the time of year, so clover honey is a more spring honey, and just with us having so many yards, we would probably have predominantly clover honey during the spring.
Okay.
During the fall, it would be more goldenrod honey, other like fall yellow flowers around, and then during the rest of the summer, it's just a hodgepodge. Most of the time, if you can't really say for sure that it came all from one flower or another, you call it wildflower honey.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, 'cause you can call it clover honey because if you collected early enough, pretty much the only flower blooming is clover, so a pretty high percentage is from clover.
Yeah, clover and dead line.
And dead line, yeah.
And when you look at, I'm assuming the Franzen's are gonna be the suppliers of the first bottle of Norwood honey.
We've been resisting the temptation to bring it earlier.
Yeah.
Well, whatever's in the bottle now, it, I'm sure, it looks like it's gonna taste awesome, but whatever it tastes like now may be completely different than what it tastes like this spring, because, you know, it's all depends on what's flowering at the time, and then the bees, they'll just, it's just a hodgepodge of whatever flowers they visited.
Yeah, I have a couple of pictures from this past year, and over the course of the year, all the color and the flavor changes dramatically. Usually in the spring, it tends to be a lot more rain and a lot more light nectars, so it tends to have a lighter and more delicate flavor, and then as you get toward the end of the summer, it starts drying out, there isn't as much nectar, and there's a lot more stuff mixed into it that the bees have to get, and when they dry it out, it gets a darker and more robust flavor.
Yeah.
So, this is probably a medium color, there are some that are almost clear, and then there are some that are, you know, dark brown.
Wow.
So, it all just depends on what's around. Some vendors will specialize in a particular type of honey, like there's orange honey and, you know, apple honey and other stuff, but you're pretty much only gonna be able to do that if you're an industrial supplier, where you can find three to five square miles, that's only that type of plant.
Yeah, and also, it differs by, you know, I've got a hive, you know, that's a mile from another, and then I've got some of the hive that's at my mom's, my mom's place, and, you know, the honey, even by neighborhood, or even by, you know, if you're a couple blocks down this way, the honey might be a completely different color or a different flavor, because the plants that the bees found in that area are completely different than the plants over here.
Wow.
So, it's very, it's a very diverse palette of flavor.
So, we just don't, if you don't mind, we just don't know, man, like, what we're gonna get, like, it's like a big mystery, like opening a time capsule, like what we're gonna get when we put a beehive in the center.
Exactly.
That's pretty cool.
And I'm sure a bunch of people have, you know, backyard gardens and such, and, you know, having bees around, I mean, they're already there, but having a higher density bees will probably help with productivity with those too.
Yeah.
Yeah, like tomatoes and such.
And then honey's like, and then honey's like a barometer of how well the environment is doing, so last, I think this, I still think this is completely nuts, and we had a nerd-out session earlier, but they had installed a new beehive in 2019.
Yep.
And you remember 2019, it was a lot of rain, a lot of sun, a lot of rain, a lot of sun, then you had the six-week drought, and I'm guessing they swarmed before the drought?
They swarmed after the drought, they swarmed after September.
So, which is even crazier, because drought, there's not many plants producing nectar, and if they do put it, put out any nectar, it's just enough to get pollinated, then they're like, "Okay, we're gonna go to seed." But this colony was doing so well that they produced pounds and pounds and pounds of honey.
Seventy, over 70 pounds.
Over 70 pounds for just, was that one colony?
Just one, one colony.
This was one colony.
Just one colony, so then, for, I mean, of course, you know, this is a biologist family, they, you know, you know that means that there was so much nectar and so many healthy plants around, that it was reflected in honey.
Oh.
So, it almost lets you know how good your environment is.
Yeah, so that, that means good things about having more hives in Norwood, it means that there's not gonna be this, a dearth of nectar and pollen for these guys, so they're not gonna become, just, you know, be there and then not have anything to eat.
Yeah.
So, when you, just for clarifications, is, because, you know, this is, this is being televised, and people, you know, they freak out at the word swarm.
Yes.
So, explain, when you say they swarmed, just kind of explain what that means.
So, a helpful way to think about bees is, you know, you have individual bees, but you really should think of it as a super organism, the entire colony is its own organism, just like you are individual cells, but you're a bunch of them working together.
And just real quick on that, in a hive, in a colony, you're looking at roughly how many?
Thirty thousand?
Thirty to fifty thousand.
Ten to fifty?
Uh, ten to fifty, depending on the colony.
You tip, you can order a three-pound package of bees, and that usually has about 3,000 in it, so, just for a sense of scale.
Okay. More than you could count.
Yes.
And a fun little fact is, in its entire lifetime, one bee will create about one teaspoon of honey.
In its lifetime?
In its entire life.
One-twelfth of a teaspoon.
One-twelfth, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
I was gonna say, that's how your bees are producing this.
That's probably-
No, it's, they, this is the work of literally-
Thousands.
Thousands of bees.
Man.
And I got 70 pounds last year.
Which is crazy.
Yeah, it's a lot. Anyway, swarm, stay on target.
Sorry, sorry, I get very excited about this.
Yeah, I can understand.
It sounded really poetic now, yeah, yeah.
So, so we have an organism, a super organism, all of these individuals working together to, for the health of the entire colony. When you, when things start getting crowded, there's a whole bunch of them, what they'll do is swarm, where part of the colony will split off, and they'll make two sub-colonies, basically. Usually, one of them will stay, because it's been so successful that they've, you know, been able to grow big enough and split, and then the other one will go off and try to find the other one. Now, again, with that super organism, you know, people know about queen bees, the queen bee, they're basically the reproduction of the entire colony, so their job is to make more bees, that's all they do. So, what'll happen is the queen that exists in the original will go off with the other group, and then the bees that are left behind will go, and they'll raise a new queen, and then that swarm will go off, find a new place to live, build their hive, and then hopefully, if they're successful, go and, you know, establish themselves again. It's important to note that when a bee is swarming, that they are incredibly unlikely to sting. The reason for that, if you think again, as that super organism, they need every single bee that they can to build their new home, they're, they're basically naked and helpless, and every time a bee stings, it's a death sentence for that bee, because when it stings at least a mammal's skin, their stinger comes off, and that takes part of them with it. So, if a bee stings you, it's decided that it's worth dying for, so that only happens when it thinks that, you know, it's gonna be for the good of the colony.
Yeah, so swarms-
Swarms, swarms are incredibly gentle, they happen in the spring usually, sometimes in the fall, like my weird hive, but usually they're in the spring, they'll just be a big ball of bees, and they are so gentle that you can, I don't recommend this, but if you are familiar with bees, you can handle them with your bare hands, and they won't, they won't sting you.
Yeah, if you're-
People, people will just like, you know-
Put bee beards and stuff, you know, you've probably seen that, that trick, yeah.
Whoa, oh, sorry.
And as, as a beekeeper-
What was your name for, just so everybody knows?
Emily Franzen.
We didn't get down on that.
This is Justin Franzen, to my left.
Justin Franzen.
My husband. When you're a beekeeper, you want, obviously want to keep those bees, so to prevent swarming, if you have a hive that's really strong, you will split it into two hives, that significantly reduces the chance of swarming. So, it's not like if people start getting bees, there's just gonna be swarms all over the place. If you're following proper beekeeping protocols, you will split it well before there's a chance of swarming, unless there's some weird event that you cannot foresee. Also, sometimes swarms will come in from wild populations, so if that happens, it's really easy, it's a known thing that beekeeping organizations love to get all these free bees, so you can just contact them or us, and we'll come out with probably a cardboard box and knock the bees into them. It's basically like, chuh, 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 and then, "Oh, hey, new hive."
You get a box of bees.
Yeah, box bees.
Well, then to touch on, you know, when we talk about swarms aren't that aggressive, and we, bees for, from our experience, you know, there's a, there's a popular belief, you know, when people think, you know, when you ask anybody on the street about bees, like, say, "Hey, what is, what is a fun fact about bees, do you know?", they say, "They sting, and they make honey." And from, you know, we rarely, I haven't been, you know, I haven't had the experience that bees have been aggressive, I've even been, you know, we're lifting out frames and putting our heads in hives.
We're breaking into their home.
We're breaking into their home, and we still rarely get stung, and I have, I had a swarm that was in, actually, way out in Glendale, and I, just to show my friends just how non-aggressive bees were, I mean, she did this on her own, but, you know, we just, you know, we moved the swarm, the swarm bees in the box, and then she sat there and just, you know, 'cause they put out a smell that smells like lemongrass, just to let everybody know, like, "Hey, we found a place, come on in," and she had her face right, and I've got it on video, she's just sitting there watching it. And bees aren't, you know, their goal is to go out, get stuff, bring it back, and like you said, grow the super organism. That's, that's all it is, they're not out there trying to hunt or, you know, sting people, because like you said, it's a death sentence. But it's, it's, I think the narrative is, you know, been misshapen, and I think, you know, with all of us here, and, you know, with the success stories, and even this ordinance is to show people, like, "Hey, this is, you know, this is about us showing other people that you can have a symbiotic relationship, you know, a non-aggressive relationship with nature."
Yeah, so, maybe we could, I could read just some of the kind of limitation items in here that kind of helped, you know, so residents can feel assured that it's been thought of, like setbacks and stuff like that.
If you'd like to do that, Mr. Collins, would you?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Tracy. So, the colony density, so basically on most lots in Norwood, only two colonies will be allowed. If there's a lot that's 10,000 square feet, which seems to me, there's not many of those, I don't, I don't know my square footage in my head very well.
I don't really do.
Yeah, yeah, so, then they could have an additional colony, but for the most part, it's just two colonies, I'm almost on any tract. The setback, so no colony shall be kept closer than 10 feet from any lot line, or within 30 feet of any public sidewalk or roadway. The front of the hive shall face away from the property line of the residential lot closest to the beehive, so that just lets, you know, people know that, that they can't put a bee, nobody can put a beehive right on the, you know, within 10 feet of their lot, and then still point it out as neighbor, like, they won't be able to, it's points inward into the lot. The flyway barrier, so, it says, except as otherwise provided in this ordinance, in each instance where a colony is kept less than 25 feet from a property line of the lot upon which the apiary is located, the beekeeper shall establish and maintain a flyway barrier at least six feet in height. So, essentially, if the hive is closer than 25 feet from your lot line, then there's a barrier, and it describes the barrier of what it might look like, but there's a barrier that has to be put up so that the bees don't fly directly towards your yard, they get to the barrier and then go straight up, so, that way they can go fly wherever.
And if possible, could I elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, please do.
You know, bees naturally, when they come out, what they'll do, they'll do what's called an orienting flight, they'll basically fly out, and then they'll look back at home and say, "Oh, this is what home looks like," and then they will usually start flying up, but they'll fly in the most direct path. They, most bees do not fly at ground level, they get up, I don't know, about what, height 20 or more?
Way above your head, yeah.
Yeah, and so, you don't typically see them, so putting this flyway barrier is just making them go straight up a little bit earlier.
Okay, that's perfect, that's helpful to hear. Let's see here, there is like an exemption, so if the, the beekeeper may be exempt from the setback to adjacent lot lines and requirements for flyway barrier by obtaining written permission from the adjacent lot owner or owners. The setback to public sidewalks and roadways may not be waived, so just keep that in mind. And then, for swarms, it does mention this, if the beekeeper serves the community by removing a swarm or swarms of honeybees from locations where they are not desired, the beekeeper shall not be considered in violation of this ordinance, of this portion of the ordinance limiting the number of colonies, if he temporarily houses them, houses a swarm at the apiary lot in compliance with the standards, the practice set out in this ordinance, for no more than 30 days. So, basically, it gives kind of an exemption for 30 days, when beekeepers do go and kind of rescue the swarm, that very docile swarm that's just trying to build its home, they'll bring them back home, or, or it could be somebody else's bees, but they'll bring them back to their place, right? And they'll have 30 days just to figure out what to do next with that. The, there's also a section in here, just standards of practice, you know, I won't read through all of it, but, you know, I'll read through a couple of these that I think are kind of pertinent, so, this is section four, 4.1, beekeeper must abide by Ohio Revised Code, including chapter 909. So, essentially, if anybody has any questions about what the, the state says, it's chapter 909 of the Ohio Revised Code, you know, and we expect them to abide by that. And they cannot opt out of the annual inspection by the county or state bee inspector as part of the Ohio Department of Agriculture's inspection program. It says, each beekeeper shall ensure that a convenient source of water is available to the colony at all times, bees remain active outside of the hive, the water source shall be closer to the hive than a neighboring source where bees could become a nuisance, such as a pool or pet water bowl. The water source may be natural, such as a pond, stream, or artificial source, so, maybe if you all might kind of want to elaborate on that, like the importance of that.
Yeah, so, bees need water, just like everything, and one of the things that can occasionally be a nuisance is if the biggest, the closest water source is someone's pool, when there's people swimming and such. So, by giving a closer water source than any other large water source, you are reducing pretty much any chances that there's gonna be a huge number of bees at someone else's yard, you know, besides that one or two occasional ones. It is also important, because you don't want bees, bees need water to make honey, 'cause they need to keep hydrated, so, it's, it's as simple as just providing a bucket full of water, or with some stones in it, so they can land and drink. You know, they don't like big, open ponds, really, 'cause they need to be able to land and drink from it, so just even a small pet water bowl sized thing is enough for them, it's pretty easy.
In fact, in fact, a lot of bees don't like to get their feet wet, so-
Very dainty.
Very dainty, I was gonna say.
Yes.
And I even, you know, I had bees at, you know, one of my mentor's house, houses in Hyde Park, and so, she had, I don't know, it was like one of those rock fountains where you've got the, the water coming out, and then it is going down the rocks, and so, right next to her, she has, you know, a group of neighbors, and they have pool parties all the time, and we had them there for two years, and you would always see them at her pond, you know, you see probably about five or six, depending on, if it's like a super hot day, you know, you might see 10, but there's not like a thousand bees at a, at a fountain, but you see like five or 10 just sitting there getting water, and they, we never got a complaint, and I don't think they even saw any bees at their pool, potentially because there was a fountain right, you know, next to the hive, which I'm assuming would probably be the same case if there was a stream in somebody's backyard too.
Right, they would, they would prefer that over a big pool, also, the pool's chlorinated, so that's kind of nasty for them.
Yeah.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
It says, each beekeeper shall ensure that no wax, comb, or other material that might encourage robbing by other bees are left upon the grounds of the apiary lot. Such materials, once removed from the site, shall be handled and stored in sealed containers or placed within a building or other insect-proof container. I'm guessing that's probably pretty common sense for most beekeepers.
Oh, yeah.
So, so-
It's just good practicing, good custodial maintenance, so you don't get a bunch of other robbers, like yellow jackets and stuff, stealing your honey.
Yeah, for a little bit of explanation, robbing is basically, you have a hive, is a whole bunch of a very valuable resource, this is basically pure energy to just about any animal, and if something finds out that it's not being adequately defended, they'll go and try and steal it. That might be other bees, they'll go, they'll charge into a hive, steal as much honey as they can and take it back to their house. Other times, it might be things like yellow jackets, which people are usually, when they think of something stinging them, it's usually something like wasps or yellow jackets, who are attracted to the same, you know, sugary water, fly around soda cans and that sort of thing. So, robbing is just the behavior where a weak hive is overwhelmed by an outside force So robbing is just the behavior where a, a weak hive is overwhelmed by an outside force and has their honey stores stolen.
And nine times out of 10, yellow jackets, you know, it might be the reason why the ordinance was in the first place is, is what people get stung by.
Gotcha. That's good.
You're just not looking that closely to say like, what's stung me?
Just looks yellow and black and you're like bee, but usually it's nasty yellow jackets.
We don't want to draw bears either.
We already got coyotes. So then 4.5 here, for each colony permitted to be maintained under this ordinance, there may also be maintained one nuke under, is that saying it right, nuke?
Yes. Short for nucleus.
Okay. Upon the same apiary tract. So could you explain kind of what that?
Yeah. So that's kind of with, when I talked about swarming, um, if you want to bring them from swarming, you put them in a nuke or part of the colony in a nuke, which is basically just a very, very small colony. Uh, and that reduces the chances of swarming and then you can figure out, uh, what you want to do with it from there.
So it's, it's, bee behavior is kind of interesting. Uh, it's almost like an insect democracy. What'll happen is when things start getting crowded in a hive, the bees will, you know, start making bids and, uh, basically saying, hey, I want to get out of here. I want to swarm, I want to swarm. And, you know, if you're an attentive beekeeper, you can see those signals. You can see a bunch of the bees are kind of like hanging out by the entrance or they're doing what's called bearding, where they just all kind of hang out on the front and just dangle from the front. And so if you start seeing those signals, what you can do is they, okay, well, I'll give you guys a new home. And you just go and stick them in the box and then they're, they're happy. So a nucleus, they just, is a small proto-hive. You, normal hives are eight to 10 frames of, you know, honeycomb. A nucleus is usually about four. So it's just a starter thing. A lot of apiaries will sell a nucleus and just say, hey, starter hive.
Okay. Excellent. Each beekeeper shall, uh, maintain his beekeeping equipment in good condition, including keeping the hives painted if they have been painted, but are peeling or flaking. And securing unused equipment from weather, potential theft or vandalism and occupancy by swarms. It shall not be a defense to this ordinance that a beekeeper's unused equipment attracted a swarm and that the beekeeper is not intentionally keeping bees. Uh, so, and then the last part is each beekeeper should practice best hive management practices, which includes replacing queens and colonies, exhibiting defensive behaviors, practicing swarm control measures. And avoiding disturbing hives when such disturbance is more likely to cause issues with neighbors or the general public. Yep. Was there anything else that y'all kind of wanted to add on either of those last two?
No, I think that's, that covers about everything that I could think of.
Okay. And then, uh, if you don't mind, so section six is the compliance. So, uh, I can kind of go through some of these points if you'd like, and that way we can kind of see, uh, is there any concerns about, you know, having the health department, uh, maintain some of these? But, um, so compliance, upon receipt of credible information that any colony located within the city is not being kept in compliance with this ordinance. The designated city official, I would say, health commissioner shall cause an investigation to be conducted. If the investigation shows that a violation may exist and will continue, the health commissioner shall cause a, a written notice of hearing to be issued to the beekeeper. Which should have these, there's specific things that are on here. There'll be a hearing that'll be conducted, the burden's on the city to demonstrate by proponent, preponderance of evidence that the colony or colonies have been kept in violation of this ordinance. If the health department or their designee order, if they order that the bees be removed, moved from the city or such other action as may address the violation. Let's see here. Oh, the person, so if they basically get ordered that they're, they're in violation, the person cannot keep bees, uh, in the city for a period of two years. So essentially it just is a timeout for that person. Okay. And then it just talks about if the order is not being complied with, the city may remove or destroy the bees and charge the beekeeper with the cost thereof. And, you know, Emily and Brandon and I went back on this, or destroy the bees, uh, because they were like, don't destroy the bee. You know, well, I mean, they, in general, you don't usually want to destroy and actually it would be harder to destroy bees because then you've got to find some way to contain them and then kill them. It's much better to transport the bees somewhere else. So I was trying to tell them that the, and I let them know and we all talked about it, but destroying just gives the city options if they had to use it. But the city would not, uh, for anybody worried about this bees being destroyed, that would be a very unlikely. Yes, a very unlikely thing, but it at least leaves it there. Or if like some bees were injured during the process, um, the city wouldn't be like liable because they could destroy them if they wanted to. Okay. And they would, again, they would charge the beekeeper. Uh, then it says, upon destruction of bees by the city, all equipment shall be returned by the city to the beekeeper with expenses of transportation to be paid by the beekeeper. Uh, the city's destruction of the bees shall be by a method that will not damage or contaminate the equipment, including wax foundation. It just has an appeal process, the decisions, the hearing officer may be appealed by the beekeeper as provided in the city's rules and regulations. If no provision for appeal exists, the beekeeper may file a notice of appeal with, with the city secretary within 15 days of the date of order. Placing US mail to the beekeeper or 10 days if the decision is announced at the hearing by the health commissioner. An appeal shall not, uh, stay the health commissioner's decision in the sense that they can appeal it, but the decision is still there. Uh, and the beekeeper shall be required to comply with any order, uh, pending the outcome of the appeal. Uh, no hearing and no order shall be required for the destruction of honeybees not residing in a hive structure that is intended for beekeeping. So if the, basically this ordinance doesn't stop the city, if there's swarming bees somewhere else or they need to get rid of them, uh, that's not kept in a normal hive. Then this won't, this whole ordinance won't affect that, is all it's saying. So that's basically the ordinance there. So. Kind of to you, Mr. Tracy, though.
I think, Mr. Bond, I have maybe one question in regards to compliance issue. Has, is there any, and I know any residents following this will probably ask the same question, so I'll just ask it now.
Yeah.
Is there any way to track the residents who are, who have the hives? Are we doing a permit process? Are we doing a, I mean, it, we can even do a permit process that's where the fees are waived, where it's no fee. Or are we setting up a book that has addresses with the beehives in it? Is there some sort of process that we're going to go through instead of just saying, anybody that wants beehive can have a beehive?
Yeah, no, it's a great question, Mr. Tracy. Uh, the ordinance as written does not have that. I would be curious if you all know, is there like a registry that's easily accessible at the state?
Ohio Department of Agriculture, you know, you're required to register your, uh, beehive. Now, people can do and, you know, set up hives and not register them. But, you know, for the most part, the Ohio Department of Agriculture is what's going to have that registry of hives.
Yeah. Um, I don't know if that registry is online, but I know that you can call the state apiarist and request it if you need people from like a certain area code or zip code, for instance.
And, and having a directory is typically helpful because say if they're, you know, in three years, there was a bee swarm, um, on the side of city hall. Somebody could say, okay, uh, we got to get this out of here. They would look on some sort of directory and see that the, you know, the friends, ends are, you know, local beekeepers, they give them a call and then they come and pick up the swarm. So.
And I like the idea of just doing maybe a directory of who has them within the city. I mean, I, I don't think we really need a permit, to be honest. But I'm just trying to think outside the box of what residents would think coming into this. And if we have some sort of registry that shows who has the hives. Even if we need some help with bees in the city of Norwood, maybe we can have some of our local beekeepers help out.
Well, one question I do have is, so you guys seem like you're well put together, you guys have done this and you guys are professionals at this. So I'm not, and I don't think any of us are unless we have, you know, different hobbies. But what, how hard is it to, to get these bees and to put them in your yard? Like, you know, people go out all the time, oh, I'm getting a new dog and then a couple of months later that dog is chewing everything up. You gotta get rid of them. Inexperienced owners, like how is it easier for people to, to be, try to be trendy and go out there and say, I want to get some bees and set up? Cause I feel like that could be a dangerous thing if they're not properly trained or they don't really know what they're doing, they're in over their head.
Yeah. So, yeah, that, that's a good point. I don't know that it's, uh, likely dangerous. The worst that's going to happen is you'll get someone that's inexperienced, they'll get, uh, a package of bees or something, get a hive started up and then they just ignore it. And then what's going to happen is you'll have a hive that just does its own thing. You know, as we established before, bees don't, aren't really interested in stinging people. They only do that when, you know, they feel that the colony itself or their life is in immediate danger and they might as well go out swinging. So inexperienced, the worst thing that can happen with an inexperienced beekeeper is actually to the health of honeybee populations as a whole. There are a lot of diseases that, uh, bees are, you know, suffering under right now and pests and other parasites. And, uh, altogether they've led to what some people might be familiar with, it's, uh, colony collapse disorder. Where a lot of bees are just wandering away from their hives. And, you know, it's still under investigation, but generally it's assumed that's because of a couple of different parasites and viruses and other infections. And if they aren't properly tending to the hives, then that can be a locus of infection. And it can be an infested hive and then that, that will spread to any hives in the area. So that's probably what I consider the biggest danger of an inexperienced and negligent bee owner. In terms of individual people, I don't think there's going to be a great risk. The exception being if someone has a, you know, honeybee allergy, in which case it, you know, like to go back to your registry comment, it might be helpful to someone that does have such an allergy to say, hey, I'm your neighbor and I have a honeybee allergy, is there anything we can do to work this out?
Yeah, that was going to be my next question is there's going to, there's people already that, that kind of are scared of that. And, you know, you guys saying bees, that they're not out to sting people, but it does happen.
It does.
Absolutely.
Dogs bite people, bees sting people. I mean, eh, how, is there a way to kind of like, make sure that's not a, a huge occurrence? Or where we can kind of curtail that or, you know, bee education or?
Basically it's, um, what, what in the ordinance is the most helpful is having those flyway barriers. Because otherwise, any given bee that you see around could be from anywhere within a five mile radius. And in addition to honeybees that are kept in hives, there are also native bees that can sting and produce a similar kind of reaction. So I don't think there's any way to 100% prevent anyone from getting stung by any bee. But having some more education about it and making sure that you don't have, um, your hive in a area where someone could walk into the kind of a takeoff and landing zone, so to speak. Is the best way to reduce any extraneous stings. There's always going to be the instance of someone walking barefoot in the yard and getting, stepping on a bee. The first time I got stung was by a bumblebee when I tried to grab it because I was an idiot. But, yeah, uh, I mean.
Feels like somebody would step on some glass.
Yeah. Unfortunately, there's no way to 100% prevent that kind of stuff, just like there's no way to 100% someone getting bit by, by a dog, by a negligent owner. But I would say the chances of someone who is negligent having bees and that being the direct cause of someone getting stung is negligible.
And I do like your, your point. Um, I think you raised a great point about, you know, it's super popular right now and how hard is it to get a beehive?
Right.
You know, how many people are going to do it? And, 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 you know, I mean, we've been doing it for a while, so of course we know that it takes a lot. I mean, you wouldn't have somebody, I mean, sure, we can nail two blocks of wood together, but that doesn't make you a carpenter. But, you know, for a lot of people, you know, what I tend to recommend is, you know, everybody's like, Brandon, I want to get bees, I want to get bees, I want to get bees. And I say, okay, well bees eat, you know, they need flowers, they need foliage. Before you become a beekeeper, you need to put in, put in, like go plant, you know, if you want to, if you want to, what is it? How much, would you say an acre of pure beehive it takes?
Something like that, yeah.
Something like an acre. I'm not saying go plant an acre of flower and stuff, but go plant something and read up on it. I would say a lot of people, um, I always joke and say, you're more of a beekeeper. I mean, I live in an apartment with no yard, but I always tell people, you know, you're more of a beekeeper than me because your whole yard is a pollinator habitat.
All I've got is a box that they stay in.
All I've got is a box that they stay in. And so if people were to plant the pollinator habitats, which is really the, the undertone of what we're putting out there, then you've got honeybees, you've got, you know, native bees, you've got, um, what is it? The little small birds, the hummingbirds, you know, you've got all types of pollinators and that's really what we want to bring.
Well, another question I have too is, uh, if you guys even know, um, what is kind of the effect on the ecology of it and ecosystem with native bees? And bringing in other bees to compete for what is already a limited resource for the wild bees around?
That's a good biologist's question there.
That's a good biological question.
Well, in science in fifth grade, we're learning about that with our kids right now, so. And we, we use it as an example in class today, so I was like, I'll ask that question.
Yeah.
So, yeah, of course honeybees are not native here, but it's like any domestic animal. You bring it in because it serves a purpose. And by educating people with something that they can touch and they can get into safely, as opposed to a bumblebee nest, which is in the ground and you dig it up, they will definitely sting you. That will in turn provide even more pollinator habitat because more people understand that they need to plant flowers for these native bees. Additionally, this being in a city, there's already a lot of issues that these native bees are facing beyond the pollination and the lack of flowers. So I think, you know, bringing in non-native insects is never something I want to do. But in this case, I think the benefits outweigh the drawbacks and it will increase, overall, it'll be a net benefit to native pollinators. Because that's something that I really care deeply about too.
People will get more exposure to, you know, insects, see examples of, uh, the benefits they provide to, you know, the ecology of the area. Get some, you know, hands-on exposure, learn that, you know, they're not actually all that scary and that they do a lot of good for us. And hopefully be, you know, uh, incentivized to go and, you know, start planting food sources and that on balance will help.
Even as little as just being like, you know what, maybe I won't spray that insecticide in my yard this year. I mean, that's a huge, that's probably one of the biggest sources of native bee death is just overuse or misusing insecticides on flowering plants. So being aware of that while using these honeybees is kind of a charismatic species to get people in the door. For me, it opens up all these opportunities to save other native species.
And you get it, you know, you're, you're a professor or teacher, I always get mixed up, like professor, college teacher.
Not a professor, that'd be, that'd be a lot more money.
Well, you get it, like, you know, if you're dealing with fifth graders, you got to have an attention getter, like something that gets them riled up. Well, in, in a good way, because lot of graders can get. And, and I think it's exactly what you said, it's, it's bees get people to think about nature in a more like mindful way. And, and that's, that's, I completely agree with you.
In your first questionnaire, you're talking about, can people just start this up? You know, Amazon is one of the places that everybody goes with everything. I just pulled it up. I don't see where you could buy bees. You can buy all the product, the, the hives and all that. But you can't just go to Amazon and buy bees. So I'm sure you have to go somewhere specific to actually buy, like you said, a seven pounds or however you did.
Three pounds usually, and it's, you, basically every colony is going to come from an existing colony. They're going to be doing a, a split, a, a swarm. It's an artificial swarm, basically. So if you're going to be getting, uh, bees, it's probably going to be from an existing beekeeper. And, you know, there, there are, you know, apiarists that specialize in rearing, uh, those colony packages. There are some that specialize in just rearing individual queens. Because the, the queen's genetics will determine what the rest of the swarm will be.
But yeah, you can't just go on Amazon and be like, ooh, three pounds of bees for me. You have to go to these very specific websites. Usually they have like a lot of small operations.
It's definitely comparable to, you know, getting a dog or something, you know? There are people that can do it just in the backyard, but for the most part, you know, you're going to be going to either a breeder or someone else that has that sort of.
Yeah. And you, you have to order in advance. You can't just spur the moment get it. You have to order it basically right now to plan for an April, um, beekeeping stuff.
The beekeepers have to plan ahead because they have to basically say, okay, I've got to build my hives big enough that they're all going to swarm. And I need however many orders, I have to have those many swarms in the spring to meet my order demand. So they basically have to know before now if they're going to be able to meet that demand.
Once it gets to June, you can't just spur the moment go out and get bees. They're just not out.
So it's a, it's a naturally kind of built-in, think about it process?
Yeah. And once they're, once the beekeepers are out, they're out. They can't just make more, uh, swarms very quickly, so.
Yeah. The bee's natural life cycle is they do a, they, so they, they make honey so that they can survive over the winter. That's their food store. They use that for energy, they shiver their wings to keep themselves warm. Inside of a hive is like 90 degrees all through winter. So, but what that allows them is when spring comes around, the very first flowers start showing up. They can go and start collecting stuff before any other insects have been able to unfreeze. That's where they get the advantage from. And then they build up as fast as possible with those extra resources so that they can out-compete other insects. That's, you know, the strategy behind making honey.
But, um, and unlike cats and dogs, I can go outside and get a free cat right now. Probably in, within five minutes. It's gonna, it costs at least $200 to $500 to have like the hive and the bees and all the equipment you need, depending on how fancy you want to get. So it's less of a impulse thing and more of a, you actually do have to research a little bit and be reasonable about it.
Like theoretically, there would be a way that you could do it for like five bucks, but that's.
That's so hard.
That's someone that knows what they're doing, that it's, and that gets lucky, that's like, I have a cardboard box and I found a swarm and I knocked the swarm into the cardboard box. Kind of luck.
You talk about how, uh, plant flowers and things like that, those are good areas that you would want to have, you know, be, do beekeeping. Where, uh, where might be places that, hey, you know, just isn't like high traffic areas, things like that, that would, would be bad for anybody even remotely thinking about, you know.
So, uh, the, the ordinance has a pretty good, you know, idea. They just have enough setback, so, you know, when bees leave the exit, they have a little takeoff ramp and then they have a little landing ramp. And so it's a little traffic jam. You can actually sit and watch them and they just kind of zoom in and out. If that's, if their flight path is in like where a sidewalk is or there's a high traffic area or, you know, a, a road, anything that's, so they're going to run into. Then that would be a potential concern, just because every time there's an interaction between a bee and something else, there's a possibility of a sting.
I, I wouldn't put them in a super high traffic area like a Doral Field, for instance. There's a lot of kids kicking soccer balls. Don't want that. No one would ever want to put a hive there frankly. Uh, and also it's. Uh, and also it's better to, you know, not have them out because if someone is curious or has bad intent, they could go and mess with it or something. I will say that we have ours on a college campus, which has a higher proportion than average of people who are perhaps a bit more inubriated than they should be. And I, I know, right? Try to, stay with me here. But, and we've never had any issues with anyone messing with the hives or got, getting stung.
Yeah, I would say if, even for example, if the hive was this chair here. At this point, maybe even by the, by the time they got to Emily, you, you wouldn't see them. Because their, their, their goal is to get up as high as possible. Like, okay, where am I going? Okay, over there. You know, if they're staying low, they're just going to be, you know, on a city block when they need to be flying to the nearest park, so.
Yeah, bees use a, a variety of different methods to navigate, but pri- but primarily they use the, the sun, the angle of the sun, and I think they have some magneto sense.
Yeah. In fact, they can communicate in the dark is even another mystery.
Yeah, they, they, they communicate by vibration and stuff too, but the, uh, the important thing is they go up, up above the tree line as soon as they can. So then they can orient on the sun and then, you know, the magnetosphere and then wh- wherever they got directions from whoever came back from finding a whole bunch of flowers.
Yeah, like the biggest thing is just, I would say, you know, of course, you wouldn't want to put it in a swimming pool or, you know, at the front door of a school. I mean, it's, it's all about just giving the bees their space to be bees. And, you know, you know, whether that's like, you know, at, at my high school, we're going to put beehives here and then just so people in a visible spot. But, you know, you put beehives here and then as opposed to, you know, we'll give like a ten-foot barrier of just plants. You know, so as long as you don't get people in that entrance, then, I mean, even if they got close to the entrance, they, you know, I get close all the time, I'm not bothered, but you know, you just want to give them space and then when they're high enough, all you, all you see is right, you know, a foot from the hive.
Uh, as an example, uh, uh, last year I had a friend of mine, uh, his daughter is, uh, in the Girl Scout troop, Brownies actually. And their, their troop came out and we just did a little example. I offered, I had two veils, the things that cover your face, and I asked, you know, if anybody had any allergies, if they wanted to put those on. But otherwise, not worry about it. So I've got a whole bunch of, you know, nine, nine, ten-year-old, uh, girls and it's like, if you're comfortable, you can come up and literally be within, you know, six inches, like, as, right up against your face. As long as you're not in their way where they're going, they don't care.
Yeah, that's a, I think that's a great point. Um, I did want to revisit, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, uh, the registry portion that was talked about. I have not, I don't know how easy it is to, like, I haven't caught, again, I haven't contacted the Ohio Department of Agriculture, but if they have like the information that we need, uh, you know, it's essentially just once every couple of weeks, the health, the secretary at the Health Department or somebody just calling and having them fax over the list again. I mean, is, are we, can, do we think that might be okay or do you think we're wanting to see like they register with the Ohio Department of Agriculture and come to the city and register with the city as well?
They could call in.
Yeah, I kind of think it'd be nice to have them registered, just so we know.
You know, I mean, they could call in to register, but just.
Even if it's just a list with, on a piece, you know, in, in a binder where if they call in and say, hey, I've got this beehive, I live here. I have one colony. And then they write down the address. I mean, I, I don't know if the law department has any.
I have some, I, I'd suggest that we probably don't need it. Because the revised code, the Ohio Revised Code, Section nine oh nine point zero two, uh, requires that beekeepers register their hives. And it's, it's a little like registering a car. We don't have, you know, we don't keep car registration in the city. Those are available, you know, through the state. I, I'm guessing we really don't need it, but I'm guessing further that the Health Department probably isn't interested in another database of things. I mean, if there's a problem, you can check with the, with the State Department of Agriculture is what I'd suggest. And again, I, I'd compare it to the car analogy. You know, we don't have, I don't register my vehicles with the city.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, and, and I can imagine too.
It might just be, uh.
Does that pick up on, uh, microphones for people that might be watching or looking later?
Just repeat that, Matt.
Basically, he had said that the, um, the state holds the registry and that there wouldn't be any purpose for us to hold a registry as anybody that has, that wants to know who has a beehive can go to the Department of Agriculture and, and find out from them who has a hive and that it, it wouldn't be purposeful for us to, to, to have a registry, so to speak. Um, and possibly put that burden back onto the Health Department to hold another book.
Which might be nice though to have a binder at the Health Department, just strictly, I mean, like you said, it's not required. Would it be nice just so?
As a courtesy.
If somebody has questions, uh, they can call, we could refer them to the Health Department, the Health Department say, well, here's a list of five people that live in Cincinnati or in Norwood that, uh, currently are, are beekeepers and, you know, if you want to contact them. If just out of informational purpose.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, either way is totally a legitimate thing. It's just up to you guys. I mean, it's not going to add any trouble for any beekeepers in the area.
As long as residents know who they can call.
Yeah.
Whether that's looking it up with the state or, you know, whatever the easiest way, as long as they know, okay, there is something I need to figure out, you know, they can call somebody.
The, the only way I could conceivably see it being a problem is if someone, uh, would, you know, with, with malentent, might decide to, to use that registry, say, ah, so there's some beehives there and I can go and take them.
They can do that anyway.
They can do that anyway because, exactly, so.
Yeah, and I think we could probably ask the Health Department to add to their website too, so when, you know, just, uh, just a line or something saying, hey, if you have questions about who owns and put the phone number on, uh, for the state. Because, I mean, they will have the most up-to-date. And I think too, what will likely happen is if there ever are like concerns or issues, I think the first before the Health Department does, I think the first thing they'll do is probably call the state and ask for them to come out and inspect it again, like essentially. So the state's going to be the ones that have the expert on this because they hire the professional beekeepers to do the inspections.
I'd like to just check with Mr. Gary and see if you have anything to add as far as, do you think that there's additional that we need to add to this or just your thoughts?
Well, I've learned more about beekeeping in this meeting than I ever knew before. As the value of my thoughts are fairly limited, I, I can tell you that this, that this model ordinance was put together uh, basically by the Ohio State Beekeepers Association. And I think has been implemented in some other communities. What, I, I've gone through this a couple of times. And one of the things we've done is to actually specify that it's the Health Inspector, Health Commissioner, et cetera, that would do this rather than building department.
Right.
It's more of a Health Commissioner-type function, I think.
Yeah.
Um, and we, the other thing that we did was capitalized all the defined terms. There's a bunch of defined terms in Section Two. And we have capitalized them throughout the ordinance so that people recognize, A, if there's a capital, you know, if there's a capital term, then that means it's defined. So we can go back and look and see what that actually is.
Okay.
So, um, I mean, I, I think, let's put it this way. There are plenty of other things that I know more about that I could offer opinions about and I just don't know to be, you know, beekeeping well enough to really be dangerous.
This would be at least a good starter ordinance. If we have to come back and add something, tweak it in any way, we can do that.
Yes.
Uh, and, and change it, but this would be a good starter.
The one thing that we clearly are doing, would be doing, put it that way, if the council chooses, um, is to repeal the, the two existing ordinances or the portions of the two existing ordinances that deal specifically with bees and beehives. Because you'd have to do that in order to implement this.
So we would, we would need to go, we would need to repeal those two and then add this.
Right, and that's what I've, that's what we've done with, I don't know what's, what draft you may have, but.
We have, we have the draft before you capitalize, before we ask you to capitalize the first.
Well, that Section One that you have is re, is repealing the sections within that, the prior ordinances in nineteen eighty-six and two thousand and ten that prohibit the keeping of bees and the maintenance of beehives. In other words, you're taking that off the books and putting this in its place, regulating the process.
All right, so that, this particular draft is what we would, would cover that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, we don't have to add anything to it if that's what the council chooses to do.
I, I think one last point that I'm going to ask or one last question I'm going to ask would be, what are your expectations for the hive or hives? I don't know how many you would have. I'm up, I'm guessing up to two. If you have one, you probably have two. I mean, are, are you looking to create a business out of it? Are you looking at it just as a hobby?
Yeah, so speaking personally, it's mostly just as a, a hobby. You know, the, the honey is a, a nice side benefit, but it's really the satisfaction of, you know, caring for this, this organism, seeing it grow, making sure it's healthy and then, you know, seeing the benefits of the environment around you. Seeing, seeing more things pollinated, more, uh, plants fertilized, more crops, just in general.
And for me, it's also the education. I've used it for, uh, Girl Scout troops, Montessori school, uh, grade school classes, just to educate them about ecology, sustainability and beekeeping as well. And they're really cute too, so, you know.
I, I was going to ask that question, but I figured I'd talk to you later about it was school activity.
Oh, yeah. We, we have had many, many people come out and we can always organize anything that people want to do, uh, once it gets to spring, obviously.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd be, you know, enthusiastic if people want to learn more about bees and beekeeping. You know, I, I really enjoy, you know, educating people about it, so I guess that's kind of a.
If you hadn't noticed, we like to talk about bees a lot. It's may have been subtle, you may not have picked up on it.
We're not talking so much about bees tonight, I mean.
I don't know.
Well, I'd say, you know, Norwood's a host of some very visible companies in, in the region. And, and I would love to see more of the, more of the companies, you know, commit to planting pollinator habitat on their campuses. That would be my, my objective.
Well, I mean, and, and my thinking was, you know, the, the corner lot at Montgomery and, uh, or not Montgomery, at Williams and Elsmer. That's become a real good educational spot for flowers and plants.
Yes.
That's something I could definitely talk to Genie about.
Well, I mean, not just putting something there, but I'm, I'm saying, you know, maybe down the line in the future, we figure out something within the city that we could utilize for education.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I would enthusiastically, you know, like to participate in anything if the city decided they want to have like an educational hive or something like that.
And I know right now, um, with the new Watson Way section, uh, the committee is working on making a big section be a pollinator, native plant type of thing. And so I've volunteered, uh, to apply for a grant to help with the pollinator part or whatever else they need for that, so.
Awesome.
Um, we're also making our own, our own yard more pollinator-friendly, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, uh, add, I mean, I'm just looking at the City of Cincinnati's beekeeping regulations and they are, I mean, there's like
It's like one page.
Yeah, yeah, there's just like four little sentences almost. I mean, essentially it's, uh, you've got bees and then basically it's like a table where they've got bees and then they've got chickens and they've got all these other things and there's literally just a few words here, like, uh, beekeeping. So, long story short, and they don't have a register either and then, uh, but it's, I, I'd like what we're, where we're going with this and I like that we have kind of a lot of this kind of laid out here. Kind of protects the city as much as possible, but, uh, you know, it, it's just, it's really, I think it's going to be fascinating. And I also did find out from them, we talked about the council meeting, uh, they do, at Xavier, the beekeeping, the beehive that they have, last year they hosted, uh, events all year. When they were harvesting and they'd have tastings and stuff like that, and I think you all said that you all would do that again this year.
Yes, that's the plan.
So, uh.
Definitely let us know.
Yeah, I'll make sure at council, yeah, yeah, that's exacting. So we'll make sure that that's known at council meetings because now that it'll be much more relevant to, even more relevant to Norwood residents. We'll make sure that, uh, that gets announced and gets thrown out there.
I do, I do have another question because I'm looking at this honey and I see these things over here. Do we get to taste this?
Oh, yes. Yes, this is slow. This is the portion of the event that is interactive.
I haven't had dinner yet and I'm.
This'll be good enough not to ask too much.
So I brought chopsticks because I didn't have like anything else, like crackers and stuff, and I figured we'd just like dip it in or.
You want to wait till after we get done?
We can, yeah, whenever, we don't have to rush or anything.
One other question I have is, and probably from Mr. Gary, is, is there, um, are we concerned that only, um, only the property owner of the property can have a hive or is that, is that something that we should be concerned about? I mean, like, if somebody, there's a two-family or four-family, they, they want to suddenly put it, would it just be that they have to have approval of the homeowner? Uh, to just, you know, to, to do that? I think you, you mentioned, you're a renter. Okay, so, um, you know, or, and then the other question along with that would be, could you get the, uh, would it be okay to just have approval from a property owner? So they have one at Xavier. I'm not sure where exactly you live.
On Forest Avenue.
Okay, so you live on Forest. So maybe there's some people, um, you know, in Ward Four down here, um, that have lots of gardens and stuff like that, that you would, that, that they would be willing, but not them be the beekeeper, but you house there with their permission. Would that, you know, do you think that that would be okay as long as there's permission of the property owner?
If you're able, would you cite me to the part that talks about who can, who can operate?
I don't think that we do.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't think it's.
Yeah, I don't think we have a thing where.
Because, I, I mean, I can tell you that Ohio law generally treats owners, I mean, defines ownership as pretty broadly.
Right.
So.
So we could assume, and, and I know that's a terrible word to use, but that if the property owner is okay with it, then it's just okay, you know, that's okay. So they could do just that. They could, they could get with other people and say, hey, would you be interested in it because it helps their, their gardens? And, you know, it produces.
As long as it complies with all the other regulations, including setback in the direction of the opening of the hive and that kind of stuff.
And that's a, actually a pretty common symbiotic relationship. Someone says, hey, I'd love to have bees on my property. I just don't want to deal with them.
Yeah.
Meanwhile, a beekeeper says, I'd like to have more bees, but I, you know, got a whole bunch of hives already. I'd like to put them somewhere else and, you know, give them so they're not all on the same place, so.
Distribute the wealth.
Yep.
It's a little like leasing your, your farmland.
Absolutely, exactly.
Almost exactly the same thing, yeah.
We want all fifty thousand over in Ward Two.
I've got a big enough yard up in Ward Four.
Yeah.
It's okay, gentlemen. There's space enough for everyone.
So, yeah, I, I guess, are we okay, Mr. Chair, um, referring this to the full council, do you think?
Just report it out?
I, I think I am. I'm good with that.
Are we going to report it out, um, and have the law department go ahead and put an ordinance together? Or just report it out that there's one coming or?
I mean, if, if we're all okay with the ordinance as it is now and we're only putting, installing the Health Department in there or Health Commissioner in the certain places, I'm okay with reporting it out and taking it to the next council.
We can have it Tuesday night.
We could have one, yeah, we could have a one, yeah, I mean, we're definitely not rushing on this, so, you know, we definitely do one reading per meeting for the next three and I guess we do the first one Tuesday night then, it sounds like.
Sure, that'd be great.
Uh, that helps them too because that'll get it done if the council approves it at the end of February and it takes thirty days to go into effect, so that's right around April first.
And that's when you would normally start a hive anyway.
Yeah, normally you, you start new hives with those packages around the same time that they'd be swarming anyway, so that's typically around the April timeframe. We've actually got, you know, packages of bees that are coming April twelfth, most likely. Uh, and there's, there's a couple of places that we would like to put hives in. There's a garden that's technically on, you know, Xavier's campus, but it's within Norwood city limits. So we kind of wanted to put one there because it's a nice garden right there, but we also didn't want to break the law and, you know, get our bees impounded or something. Go in bee jail.
Yeah, bees, yeah. Yes, yes. Uh, I don't know if we can make the bars smaller.
I mean, they are, they're already wearing stripes though, so.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Well, yeah, I don't think I have, we have anything else at then, so I'll defer to you.
I guess that'll conclude our meeting if everybody would like to adjourn for the evening.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks you, Tim, for being here.